All right, let's bring this meeting of the City of Eugene Planning Commission to order. And looking that I see no, I see one potential public commenter. No, he's shaking his head. So I guess we'll, with that, we'll move directly into the AT&amp;T Mobility deliberation. And I guess I wanted to make a few opening comments to the commission about this. This is really our last opportunity to complete without scheduling an additional session to do that work. We must get, the deadline is shortly occurring, I'm not sure.
It's the seventh.
It's the seventh, so if we don't get it today, we're going to have to find another time within the next day or two to get together and do this. To that end, we're going to start where we left off, which is on the assignment, the sixth assignment, which is related to the landscape condition. And spend some more time with that. Staff has prepared, gathered some more information for us, and prepared a new text for condition that combines what was discussed before. After the sixth assignment, we'll jump to the 11th, 12th, and 13th and discuss those. Those are the ones that we're most concerned about. And when we've completed 11th, 12th, and 13th, we'll then go back and try to step through, hopefully reasonably quickly, but step through as needed, all of the conditions, starting with the first. One other thing I want to mention here is because this is the last session there, and if we're successful, it'll be the last session, I should say, we want to make sure that where we come up with edits or changes in wording, that those edits are specifically worded and that we get a vote to make sure that staff has clear direction on our support for those changes. So with that, any questions so far? I guess I'll turn it back to staff to start again on the sixth assignment.
Okay. Again, so where we left it last time was that there were, there was a requested, I guess, information as far as what the hearings official meant by vicinity of the tower. So we have some more information on that. And we also made some changes to the condition of approval that we think clarifies and outlines more clearly for the applicant and owners what the process is. So originally, there was a condition from the hearings official and to, for landscape architects to work with property owners. And then if that didn't work out, send a certified letter out. So what we did is change that certified letter as kind of the, to the beginning of the condition, saying, "Applicant, this is how you're going to contact the property owners, buy certified mail, and then work through either the landscape architect. And if that doesn't work out, then work through, then come up with a minimum of two trees or no trees in front of the property, depending on what the property ever wants." So hopefully that does it. I don't know if you've had a chance to review that and kind of any comments as far as how that's now outlined. I know one of the questions was that the condition is proposed originally said a maximum of two trees for each property owner. And the change now says that a minimum of two evergreen or deciduous trees will be planted by the applicant. Originally, the intent was to allow the property owner to choose, I can either, I can either have zero, one, or two trees in front of my property line, and they fill out the form. That's no longer the case here. It just basically sets out as a fallback, at a minimum, the applicant will plant two trees. So see if that conveys that properly. And if there's no questions on that, we could also, we've got a chance to review the three options of what we provided attached to the final order. We can also talk about those.
Yeah. Sorry, John. Go ahead.
Well, I think Randy was first.
Oh, Randy, go ahead then.
Stephen, just the minimum, the minimum two trees, where does that come from?
The minimum two trees comes from the, from the staff condition originally. At that time, it was a maximum choice for the property owner.
No, but there, does this, is this part of a, you hear requirement where?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Originally worded it.
Originally, it was found in the condition for the adequate screening.
Okay.
Okay.
Commissioner Belcher.
So what's the maximum? I mean, how do we determine the, if the resident says, "I want 500 trees"? I mean, obviously, that's illogical, but where, how do we determine what is fair? Or how does the, I guess, the department determine what's fair?
The way it's set up currently, there'd really be no opportunity for them to ask for more if that minimum's triggered, because they would have had their opportunity to work with the applicant. And the fallback would be for the applicant to plant a minimum of two for our requirements. There wouldn't be a, the way it's set up now, there wouldn't be a, I guess, a back-and-forth between the applicant and owner at that time to negotiate more than two.
So the minimum of two is two.
Right. So just think of that as like a typical clear and objective standard. It's just a, is a condition that reflects kind of typical code language. Applicant is, it bears the burden of providing, this is a default. What's their minimum requirement? They've got to plant two. There isn't, this isn't an open discussion piece. That's in the first half of the option of the condition.
But the word minimum, to me, implies that there's a range.
There could be more.
And the range seems to be two.
Two or more. I mean, in the event that they can agree on, you know, a landscape plan between the architect and the adjacent owner.
It doesn't, if for some reason, the applicant wanted to give three, just because that helped, you know, satisfy somebody through that requirement, fine.
And this is the architect and the resident's decision, not the applicant's decision? This is my problem.
The first half, the first half of the condition is one which allows for negotiation between all parties. The second part of the condition is really just a requirement that the applicant still bears if they can't come to agreement. So think of that as less about negotiation, more about a safety net requirement to say, if all else fails, they can't come to any agreement about some kind of negotiated settlement, so to speak, for what kind of landscaping a particular property owner wants, then applicant, you shall provide a minimum of two.
It, I still don't understand. It's a minimum of two, but if the resident says, "I want seven," what happens?
It's not the obligation of the owner to provide those, because they had that in the first half of the condition.
Okay.
Mitch D'Arannal.
I guess that's, I guess that's the way I'm reading this, is right above those conditions that paragraph starts out. The letter shall also note that, "In the event of a documented failure to reach agreement on the provision of adequate screening." So the way I'm reading this is that at the beginning, they hire a landscape, the applicant hires a landscape architect to work with the owners to provide adequate screening. My understanding is that could be anything. It could be nothing, it could be, you know, whatever. But if the applicant then documents that they haven't been able to reach an agreement, because let's say somebody wants 500 trees, then the fallback is that the applicant then has to provide a minimum of two evergreen or deciduous trees in that instance as kind of that fallback, which would probably be two trees.
Okay.
Am I understanding that right?
Yep.
That's the way I would read it. So there's an incentive there, I think, on the owner's part to work with the landscape architect.
Commissioner Barley.
So then, just a point of clarification, if, if no agreement is reached, there will be two trees there. So if they don't want any trees there, they have to work with somebody.
That's right. And again, I think, you know, looking at, we may want to turn to the options that we presented in terms of Commissioner Lettich's suggestion in the last meeting, and looking at some different distances. And, you know, in any event, I think at the, at the minimum, we're looking at, well, at least with the third option, I think we're looking at 80 to 90 trees, all told. In the event of, you know, no agreement, or that the minimum is provided for each property, we're looking at upwards of 100 trees throughout the golf course property or on adjacent properties.
So that was somewhat of the second piece that we wanted to get your feedback on. One of the things we did, the direction you gave us at the last meeting was to consider a geographic area that was more inclusive than what we'd originally come back with at the last meeting, to include other properties that would have some form of a view shed of the tower. The direction you gave us looked to an area that was approximately 1,500 feet out. When we did that, we found there were a number of properties that actually faced away from the tower or had no line of sight whatsoever. And so we provided a second option, option two, which is somewhat the middle ground between what we'd originally proposed and what you'd suggested we come back with. Oh, I'm three, I'm sorry. Option three, which basically took into account those properties that were further away, so to speak, kind of within the direction you gave us, but ones that still had even the slightest amount of view shed of the tower. We still think some of those may have very minimal view sheds, if any, but we wanted to be more inclusive. We feel comfortable with that particular option in that it seems to reasonably get at the issues you expressed concern about before. So that's something we'd like your feedback on as well.
I guess one, one question I had in how this came up is some people expressed, you know, disappointment at the cell tower being in plain view from their backyard. And so I, I'm not 100% clear on how you decided to narrow down the option three, if, based on orientation of the house. If it's not facing it from the front, you took it off, but if it's facing it from the back, you'd...
Yeah, I think one of the other provisions we talked about last time was adjacent to the golf course as well as being one of those key pieces. So with all the properties that were within the radius you sent us away with last time that were adjacent to the golf course, we then looked at which ones really have any semblance of a view shed. What that doesn't include are properties that either aren't on the golf course altogether or those that are, in essence, facing the other direction. Because if the requirement for landscaping is between the residence and the golf course, and it's got to be as a default on golf course property to make sense, this, that, that option seemed to be the more logical one. So that was kind of based on the parameters you discussed last time as well.
I guess I'm not clear on the facing.
On what, facing?
Facing the golf course or...
But can you see, if it, you could see it from the backyard, did it stay on option three?
Yes. If, if between the tower and a backyard that faces onto, or touches the golf course, those should have stayed on as ones that we would allow for the landscaping requirement.
And there are several, if you look at option two, that would, that are touching the golf course, but then they're, they're either up against a road or there's intervening properties to where it'd make the, I guess, the condition would then be to plant trees opposite of them in the tower, which...
Right. Those would be like 71, 70, and 69 on the option two.
Correct. Yeah.
Just kind of curious why the six lots on the far western, 83 through 88, were excluded.
Only because of the, is the intervening property of the North Green?
If you look at the line of sight to the tower, that projection kind of of the area closer to the tower actually blocks the view shed of that.
Okay.
So I don't know if it, unless there were questions or comments on that, that would be one important piece to maybe take a straw vote on is kind of where you're landing in terms of the geographic area to include.
And the other option to the fourth was going with the 500-foot radius, which includes about 10 properties.
Yeah, I'm, I think you did a good job with suggesting option three. That expands what had, we had previously looked at to the adjacent, the issue with the golf course. It doesn't go so overboard as the 1,500-foot radius. So I look at some of those homes, I wonder if they can really see it, but I think to err the side of caution here is probably the, a good way to do it. So I'd be in favor of option three.
Straw poll. How many commissioners are comfortable with option three as the preferred option or the option which is cited? Raise your hand if you are. Looks like we've got, can we get it again? Looks like we got three.
I'm sort of, I'm sort of with worm on it. My concern only would be that, is it still a reasonable condition if everybody wanted a minimum of two trees?
We believe so. I mean, I think that's a manageable number. That's something that you have to feel comfortable with. There's no real benchmark for that, other than that it's, it seems as if that gets at the, first and foremost, the, the question of potential impact. And then out of that, is it something that feels reasonable in terms of the amount of trees per lot? We think so.
Commissioner Belcher.
Well, I'm still caught on the horns of my dilemma, which is I don't think we should be approving this. However, of these three options, this is the least worst.
You're always encouraging.
Well, I really feel stuck.
Yep, absolutely.
Commissioner Warnes.
Yeah, I'm having a hard time with, you know, getting on the wagon with any options, because I don't think we should be approving this. That's my dilemma.
Commissioner Barley.
I'm, I'm okay. Straw polling, yes on, on option three.
So that puts us at four. Four and one citing it as the least worst and one opposed, so. All right. I think that's about as good as it gets right now.
So any other questions you have on that landscaping condition? Otherwise, I think we'd like to move into the, the next piece. Okay? Steve, do you want to?
Any, any suggested edits or changes? Well, let's move on then.
Then to the 11th assignment of error. And so in, in looking through these next three assignments of error, the hearings official in, in his decision in all three of these provided findings that addressed some, like in the case of the 11th assignment of error, he addressed traffic, noise, stormwater, and environmental quality. Then also relied, though, on the, also relied on the, the condition that it would be screened adequately in his findings. So I guess the question is then, did he, with the screening condition as applied, does this then also meet this criterion that minimal off-site impacts?
I think as a theme, you know, assignments of error 11, 12, and 13 tend to touch on some of the same issues around, that I think relate back to both the landscaping conditions and, and the undergrounding requirement. And so if there are specific concerns that commissioners have beyond what conditions have been made at this point with respect to each of these criteria, we'd like to know what those are and see if you support the findings we've drafted.
Commissioner Lettich.
I think with the modifications to the conditions of approval that were suggesting to be made to the undergrounding and the screening and the noise study, I think that addresses, those are the, the three major off-site impacts that I think needed some work. The stormwater, the environmental quality RF commissions, and the traffic, I think the hearings official adequately addressed those. So I'm comfortable with the modified conditions as they pertained to this assignment of error.
Other comments? Straw poll again on the 11th assignment. Those supporting the language? So we got four and two.
So moving on to number 12, the hearings official took the same approach. This one's regarding compatibility and harmony with the adjacent and nearby uses. And that he, he basically set out that with the, with the limitations set by the code standards for R1 towers of heights and setbacks and that kind of thing, then in addition to requiring the noise be met with the undergrounding and relying on the screening condition, again, where the planning commission would be modifying those conditions to, to what we've been discussing, that the, then this is, this assignment of error, or this criterion is met, that it would be compatible and harmonious. So is there any discussion on that?
Commissioner Barley.
I guess I would, I would echo what Randy said about the previous one, that I feel that the hearings official did an adequate job addressing this and that with the modifications to the conditions, questions about compatibility and harmony seem to be resolved. And also that telecommunications towers are allowable uses in an R1, given that they meet the criteria. I feel that we've adjusted those enough that the, it's, it's meeting, it's the intent of being there.
The comments.
Yeah, I, this issue of what do we really mean by compatible and harmonious, just based on our previous experiences too, I'm satisfied that, to the extent it's required, the fact that towers are allowed in R1, I think at least presumes a certain degree of compatibility and harmoniousness. So I'm, I'm with Heidi, okay on this one.
Commissioner Warnes.
I'm just going to have to disagree that I personally don't think that those towers are harmonious in R1. I've always disagreed with that decision counsel made as well. And I do, I mean, I regret saying this, but I, I, I can't get my mind around why we're not allowed to talk about the emissions. Because the FCC doesn't want us to, that seems to me to be unethical because of health applications.
Well, despite the fact that the FCC says we can't talk about emissions and despite the fact that the council has approved these criteria, I don't feel those are issues we can discuss. However, again, I still don't feel we should be approving this application, because I don't think the application has, requirements have been met by the applicant. So therefore, I won't be voting yes.
Mr. Lettich.
John, just so I understand, is it, is it the top of the tower, or what is it still that is outstanding?
Well, to me, I don't think that the applicant proved the noise standard, for example, and therefore, you can't say that it's been met. And I'm not happy with the way we're doing the screening either, so.
Suggested language changes to this assignment. Straw poll on this assignment as written, those supporting it? Those opposed?
Then moving on to the 13th assignment of error. It's the livability criterion, and this is a CUP criterion. So again, the hearings official took the same approach in, in, in kind of going with the, what the applicant had provided as being sufficient, and then with the conditions and modifications that he provided, and in this case, now we're relying on the conditions and modifications that the planning commission has provided. The one addition that is added into the, or the additional link that the planning commission final order has is the, the link between the PUD final approval and the CUP approval. So that would be, because there's the earlier condition that says the condition use permit will not be effective until the final PUD has been approved, it's basically providing that link to ensure that that, that criterion is met.
Mr. Lettich.
Yeah, I thought the appellant's brought up an interesting point about what building is, and at first reading, I thought, well, okay, building can be more than just four walls and a roof kind of thing. Until I went to the, to the definition, and it is very specific in there, had, had the criteria addressed, they structured, then we could be reading this differently. But the fact that building is the key word here, I think we're okay on this one, too. The hearings official's okay on this one.
Commissioner Belcher.
And I agree with the interpretation on the building, but again, we come back to noise, so that's why I'll be voting no.
Commissioner Rannell.
I just have a question related to the noise, because I understand your concerns. I have the same concerns. If, I mean, we're kind of assuming that with the undergrounding and a new noise study, that it's going to show that it meets that 45 dB. If undergrounding and a new noise study does not show that it can be reduced to 45 dB, then all bets are off? It can't be done?
Right.
Okay. Just wanted to clarify that.
That's a good one. Other comments? Are there any suggested language changes for this assignment? Guess we'll go to a straw poll on this assignment. Those supporting the language as written? Four, those opposed? Two, four, two. So I believe now our next step is to go back to the first assignments and step through. Correct, Steve?
Okay, if you'd liked to, first time, there it starts on page eight of the packet, page two of the final order. So starting with the, so the first assignment of error is, came from New Seaguller. So this is their, their first assignment of error, and theirs was based on that they felt there's no evidence that the, denying the variance would result in compliance with the noise standard. And so they were, that was part of the assignment of error, and then the other part was that they asked also that the, that the decision be remanded back to the hearings official to allow them basically a second opportunity to get the variance. And from direction, we've seen the, as we've discussed about the noise, there's the noise condition that does address the variance, or the, the need for variance. And then there's also the, it also provides findings in there that the, that it's inappropriate for the planning commission to send it back to the hearings official, just for the fact of, of providing new evidence when a decision and modification should be made here, so.
Guess we can step on? Any questions on this?
Okay, the next one is the New Seaguller's second assignment of error and North Green Properties' first assignment of error. And that's in regards to the amount of the city charges for appeal fees. And the essence of this one is that the final order notes that while the appellant's may be raising an important issue, it's not one that the planning commission can address, and that it's beyond the scope of the hearings official's decision to look at that, because it's not something in front of him. And, and because of that, the final order also sets out that there was a letter submitted by North Green Properties as part of its appeal that related to public records request that would not be considered. And that's back on page two. So that's the essence of the appeal fee findings. So, that's the essence of the appeal fee findings.
Any questions? Comments? Good.
Now, back to North Green Properties' second assignment of error. And so, this is one we've previously discussed, and this is the, this was the discussion regarding the noise limit at the property line that we had before, how that standard is written in the code, whether it's, whether it's all of the noise at the proper line, or just those generated by the equipment, and I think based on previous discussions, the findings are written based on that it is from the sound generating equipment.
I'll just throw in my comment here, because this is kind of my sticking point or sore point with the way the code's written, and I think that the way we've interpreted it in the past, from the way I understand past applications, I can understand that, that it's new sound, but I'm not sure that I agree with the way the code's written in that. I think we should consider a change there to reflect the way we've actually been interpreting
I believe so.
So, the third assignment of error is also in regards to the noise standard, but it's the, regarding the use of the condition to address the noise standard. And this is where the planning commission previously found that modification is needed to the conditions, and also the addition of, an additional condition of approval. So, what the planning commission, from our earlier deliberations, the planning commission found that the condition of approval, number one, would need to be modified to note that the tower shall remain at exactly the same location as initially proposed in the tentative PUD and CUP, because there was question about if undergrounding will require the tower to move closer to the residences, so this condition was to ensure that. And then also provide that the applicant would be required to provide a noise study demonstrating compliance with the noise standard, and adding the condition of approval 10, which indicates that the CUP approval would only be effective upon final PUD approval, to ensure that the, because those telecommunications standards also live within the condition of use permit, that those are adequately addressed. Any questions?
Commissioner Barley.
I don't have any problems with the language as it's written. I noted that the hearings official thought the CUP, PUD criteria were confusing there, and I just, I'm curious if we're gonna follow up on that, in terms of why they originally had to apply for a CUP, right? Didn't they think they were just applying for a PUD, and then he said, no, you have to actually apply for a CUP also, and it's a weird thing in the code that maybe we want to address?
That was something we'd have to do administrative.
Well, are you suggesting legislative change to try to address that relationship?
Well, I'm just, I'm just curious, you know, in the same sense that Bill is talking about addressing the clarity of the requirements around the noise standard, that we also, I know you guys are talking about keeping the list. I guess that's really what I'm curious about, if it's making it on the list.
Is the suggestion that, in this case, that the PUD would be the only required application, and not the CUP, that one suffices, or, I guess, I'm just trying to get some clarity on what the change would be, from your perspective?
So, yeah, I think, what I understood, you're agreeing with the hearings official that the, it was correct to have him do both applications, but he also noted that it, if the intent was to have only one, that the code should be fixed.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. I mean, we don't need to know where you would land with that right now. I think, if it's more of a duly noted kind of thing for the future, that's fine. If there's something in particular that he said that you have concern about in terms of the findings, that we want to just clarify that.
No.
Okay. And we do, for what it's worth, there are other provisions in the code that do talk about the same kind of scenario, not this particular one, but others. So, it isn't the first time we've had to wrestle with that question. So, we could expand that conversation the next time we're doing code amendments.
Thanks.
Move on to number four. Okay, so the fourth assignment of error is the, regarding, and I'm just interpreting regarding the variance to the undergrounding, and it's the interpretation of the term obviate. And the essence of the findings that are provided in the final order, in essence, say that there's not, because the hearings official never got to the, to denying it, that the further interpretation of the word obviate is not necessary, but that the hearings official in this case made a permissible reading of the subsection by linking the noise standard to the variance. But the findings don't go on to say that that's necessarily the case in every situation, but that in this case, he made a permissible reading of the code, and that, and that the last line there says, "The planning commission concurs with the hearings official that a request for variance approval would also need to address other factors under the variance criteria such as stealth design, proposed landscaping configuration, or presence of mature trees." So, kind of, I think that was a request that we, that the final order clarified that would need to be the case in order to obtain the variance.
Commissioner Barley.
This is just a little language thing. I sent it out in email, but I wanted to make sure that the second line in that second paragraph removed.
The double necessary, or the unnecessary.
Since we're trying to clarify this, I don't want to make it murky by saying unnecessary, necessary, to get this.
So, is necessary unnecessary, or is unnecessary sorry?
Necessarily, but not necessarily.
I might cross out the wrong one.
Which one do you want us to strike?
I think we want to strike necessary.
Correct.
Right.
It's unnecessary for us to make further interpretations, is what you're trying to
Did everybody get that?
So, then, not enough, the assignment of error, which, Steve, is the adequate screening. And this one relates more to the, I guess, hearings official of interpreting what the, what adequate screening means, and the hearings official, in which the planning commission modified, noted that there would be some, the poll would be somewhat visible, but that from, with a, with a condition that required a landscape architect to work with the property owners, that the poll would be adequately screened. Which then relates to the next assignment of error.
I'm sorry, John.
Well, I don't want to speak to this, but again, when we review the ordinance, I think we need to have a little more teeth into the question about stealth. I mean, we're basically saying, we can't speak to this because we don't know about stealth, but I wish there was more language that, given that there may be new evidence out there that stealth designs could work, that there'd actually be an opportunity that we could possibly require them, particularly R1 zones. So, not speaking to the finding.
Okay, move on to assignment error number six, which is the one we started the meeting with regarding the landscape plan and the condition of approval. So, if, if there, I guess the question is if there are no changes to the condition, which in essence requires the applicant to send a certified letter to the property owners that would be listed on option three of your packet, and then the landscape architect would work with the property owner, or the landowners, and if for some reason they couldn't come to an agreement, and the applicant can show that, then at a minimum, the property, or the applicant would be required to plant two trees within 20 feet of the property line for all the owners, except for the North Green Apartments, which would be a minimum of eight
So, just to be clear, Steve, the, in the condition that's found on page nine or 15 of the manuals, the reference to attachment A will be option three.
Correct.
Yes.
The other thing, I think, just to clarify, if the applicant gets no response at all from the letter, then I don't think they need to plant any trees, right?
That is correct. That's the least correct.
Okay. It's only if they try to negotiate, the recipient says, yeah, I'd like some screening, and maybe they can't reach an agreement, then they get two.
That's right. That's, when I was asking earlier, though, you said the opposite.
Well, that's why I want to clarify, the minimum, if the recipient of the letter engages, but for whatever reason they can't come to an agreement about what the screening ought to be, then that individual gets two. But if they, if you read the, in your packet, page 16, page 10 of the draft decision, that very top paragraph, the last sentence in it, if the landowner does not respond to the applicant in writing, within 30 days, the applicant will not be required to provide any additional trees to address the criterion.
Okay.
As it pertains to that property. So, they have to make some effort to even get their two.
So, if they engage, I'm sorry.
Oh, go ahead, John.
Then they get two, whether they want them or not? If they start the engagement, does that then mandate that they get two? I mean, I.
I mean, presumably, if things are going south and they can't agree, and they recognize that if we don't agree on something, I'm getting two, and what I really want is fewer than two, they'll at least agree to fewer than two.
They can simply say, I'm responding, but no thanks, I don't want any landscaping. So, it doesn't force the two to happen.
It also sounds like there's nothing requiring the applicant to do anything more than two. He can negotiate, but two's two.
And then, so if they want one, they're out of luck.
No, that's.
No, they can have one, but they couldn't have.
They respond and they engage, and they say, I want one.
Got it. Okay. Thank you.
But it doesn't sound like there's anything in here that would, you know, ever require the applicant to put in three.
No, unless they, yeah, they have to mutually agree to do anything more than two.
Unless they agree to it.
Right.
Yeah, and thanks for that clarification, too, because I think it is important that if, if the view that currently exists, even with the tower, is more important to the property owner than hiding the tower, that option of keeping that visual look open is important, so, yeah.
And that very well could be for some property owners.
Yeah.
Right.
Then we're moving on to the seventh assignment of error, and that was in regard to the applicant meeting required for the, for the application. So, the hearings official was like, what happened was the applicant held a neighborhood meeting, submitted a PUD application, and then subsequently got into that process, and then was subsequently informed that they would need to submit a, an additional condition of use permit application. They did that, but what they didn't do is hold another neighborhood applicant meeting, and the neighborhood applicant meeting requirement state that you have to hold a, you have to submit an application with 180 days. So, they submitted a PUD application, but not this CUP. The hearings official basically said that the intent of the meeting was met, and that there was no substantive error raised in regards to any of the criteria that they would need to show, so, and denied that assignment of error. Okay, now we're moving on to North Green Properties' eighth assignment of error. And in this case, the, the appellant's position was that the hearings official erred by concluding that several Metro Plan policies were not independent criterion for approval of application, most, that mostly addresses policy E4 of the Metro Plan. And the hearings official basically found that the, it wasn't an independent criterion, and to the extent it was applicable to the, to the application, that there were PUD and CUP criterion that addressed that policy, that were, and those, and those criterion were, I think those we've talked about, that includes screening and compatibility and livability of those, so. And in addition to the, what we have here in the final order, we're going to add findings that also address the other policies that the appellant raised, which was policy C21 and E6. All the follow-up materials mostly talk about policy E4.
And just to, just to clarify for commissioners, the hearings official's decision addresses all the policies on, I believe, pages seven through nine of his decision. We would like to add a reference to pages 44 and 45 as well. There are some CUP findings that essentially incorporate, you know, his policy analysis. So, we'd like to add a reference as well here, a sentence that essentially that the planning commission incorporates the hearings official's findings on pages seven through nine, with respect to three specific policies. We focus on policy E4 here, but it should include C21, E4, and E6.
Can you read the language?
That the planning commission hereby incorporates the hearings official's findings on pages seven through nine of his decision with regard to policy compliance concerning policies C21, E4, and E6 of the Metro Plan.
Can you give motion to make this, Jim? That sentence is going to be inserted at the end of the first paragraph, or, or you, I just make sure I'm clear where it's going.
I believe it would fit as the last sentence in the second paragraph.
Last sentence in the second. Okay.
In the end, we'll do a motion with all the changes.
Any other, any questions from commissioners?
Moving on to assignment of error number nine, in regards to health and safety. The essence of this assignment of error was that the, that the official erred, but that he should have also addressed the safety effects of excessive noise, and the, the final order here basically says that the, while he didn't pull that out separately, that because of the, because the decision thoroughly addresses issue of noise impacts in the context of more specific governing standards, including these telecommunications standards and other standards that the, that the hearings official did not err. And the, and the extent that the noise impacts may be relevant under subsection six, the unique criteria that's managed.
Mr. Lawrence.
Well, above that, it says that the public health and safety has compliance with FCC emissions required were met. Where is any of that?
That is 20, pages 20 and 21 of the hearings official decision.
And what, I don't have that in front of me.
I got it here. I got it here.
And what was the confirmation?
So, the confirmation would be that the hearings official did not err in his findings here, and that with the other findings in the decision that addressed the noise issues, that he did not err in the way he addressed the risk to public health and safety.
Again, I think, you know, it's important to clarify, the appeal issue relates more to the issue of noise than other public health and safety issues that might go beyond that.
Yeah, I guess I just don't see how it elaborates on what the finding, what the limits are for, you know, those types of emissions. It seems so vague to me about the FCC regulations around microwave emissions.
Oh, okay.
That's my biggest problem with this. It's just, it says it's okay, and it stays within the confines of those regulations, but I don't know what those regulations are.
Oh, okay.
You know?
Those are, there's an actual telecommunications standard that directly addresses that.
Again, I think, I mean, it comes back to the FCC and federal regulations. I don't know if Emily wants to speak to that, but there are limits on our ability to address RF emissions, and I think hearings official's findings on pages 20 through 21 address that issue thoroughly, and this is basically incorporating his findings as correct.
Right.
And then, really focusing on the assignment of error, which was about noise in the context of this criterion, not so much the RF emissions.
Right. And we're kind of at the mercy of the federal regulations in what we're willing to regulate or not regulate.
That's right.
Which is what we're able to regulate, not willing to.
It would be a...
Kind of like we're over a barrel on that business.
Yes.
Okay. Well, if that answers my question.
Jeff?
And I think, just to kind of tag on to that, in the hearings official's decision, the sentence that, you know, I guess, I say it works for me, but I think that kind of explains that, is on page 20, second to the last paragraph, last sentence, as the hearings official said, "Because of the limited scope of a local government's ability to consider health risk based on those FCC standards, the hearing official makes no judgment on any of the health risk materials that were provided as public comment." So, that's kind of, I think, what the hearings official was getting to in that, is because the FCC regulations kind of supersede anything we do or want to do in that regard, then we don't really have jurisdiction over that. Jeff?
That's right. We're preempted.
We're preempted.
Commissioner Leidig. And I think it's important to note, too, the city's consultant was in enviroanalysis, is that how you pronounce it? Looked at those specifications and found things to be in compliance, so...
There's some...
Moving on to assignment of error number 10, which is in regards to alternative site analysis. So, this assignment errors in regards to that the hearings official did not adequately discuss the applicant's lack of substantial evidence, the record concerning the ability to meet this criterion. And that criterion on pages 29 to 31 of the decision are, basically, the app has demonstrated that they have looked at alternative sites, or have been considered, and have been determined to be technologically unfeasible or unavailable. And so, basically, the hearings official says, "The standard does not provide, you know, how many sites should be analyzed, and how, or provide further guidance." And that while they provided minimal information, there's no requirement the applicant selects an alternative site, and as such, meets the basic requirements. So, he basically said that the applicant provided information regarding the alternative sites, and that was enough. And I don't know if it's necessary to go back to the 11 through 13, isn't it? I think we're good.
So, I'm recalling that we have at least one, I'll say, significant edit for the citation that staff is recommending.
With regard to Metro Plan policies?
Yes.
Yeah.
We had two small edits that were suggested. One was a typo under, I think it's assignment of error one, isn't it? And then Commissioner Byerly had another edit on assignment error four, the word necessary. So, I think those are the three that I captured.
Would you like me to state those, and then to help...
Sure.
So, it's, it would be the draft final order as prepared by city staff with the following changes. On page three of the draft final order, page nine of the planning commission packet, the third line down, delete the words "the application." So, it reads, "The ancillary equipment will result in compliance with the noise standard." On page seven of the draft final decision, page 13 of your packet, the second paragraph under the fourth assignment of error, second line, delete the word "necessary." And the references to Attachment A in condition two in both places, this doesn't require a change to the document, but to be clear, what staff will use as the Attachment A will be what's in your packet as option three, view potential properties. And that's the attachment that's located at page 31 of your packet. Finally, page 11 of the final order, the draft final order, page 17 of your packet, an additional sentence will be added at the, under the second paragraph with the eighth assignment of error that reads, "The Planning Commission hereby incorporates the hearings official's findings on pages seven through nine and 44 through 45 of his decision concerning compliance with policies C-21, E4, and E6." Is that right, Gabe? And that is it.
Questions, comments? Commissioner Leidig. Yeah, when I first started reading this, I found myself being a little bit critical about the lack of clear and objective standards, but as I went through it three or four times, I came to appreciate again that every circumstance is going to be different. I guess that's why we are here, is to help clarify that. I certainly empathize with the property owners having this in the backyard, or seen from their backyard or front yard. On the other hand, I think the hearings official recognized it is a permitted, it is a use that is permitted in residentially zoned areas, and therefore proceeded to approve it with certain conditions. To the extent that the hearings official erred, in my mind, it's that he perhaps did not interpret the conditions or write the conditions strictly enough. These are pretty high standards to meet in a residential area. So, to that extent, I think what we've done with the conditions on undergrounding and addressing the noise and the screening, if that's not acceptable to both the applicant and the appellant's, I'm hoping it's at least tolerable. And if it isn't, and this goes to Luba or the Court of Appeals or higher, hopefully they'll find our judgment at least reasonable. So, I think we've done our best to sift through this, allow a permitted use, but to the extent that we can, address the concerns of the property owners that are adjacent to it. Commissioner Belcher.
Well, I would like to make a motion to reverse some of these findings. I obviously need to do that before we make our final vote, so I'm just asking for a placeholder when we get there.
To do what?
Whether that's now or later, to reverse some of the findings that we have strappled on.
Commissioner Byerly.
I was going to make a motion to approve the changes to the final order as Emily outlined.
Is there a second?
Oh, I'll second it. If that's a motion, well...
Yes.
But I just requested an opportunity to make a motion not to do that before we vote on that.
Well, now that there's a motion and there's a second, you can have discussion about that.
Yeah.
We could amend the motion.
Or you can withdraw the motion. It's up to you.
The motion's on the table, so why don't we...
Let's talk about it.
You can do a motion to amend?
I can do that. I will. May I speak?
Yes.
Okay. I would like to start by reading what Emily wrote to us on August 31st. And this is the next to the last paragraph, about halfway down. "In other words, there is no evidence to support a determination that CUP noise criterion has been met, and technically, there's no later opportunity to which the Planning Commission can defer the determination for purposes of approving the CUP. We believe that decisions denied on this basis would be legally sound." And it says, "A decision to affirm the approval of the CUP in reliance of the tentative PUD conditions presents some legal risk of remand from the Legal Board of Appeals." She also says, "We can find another way to get there," but I'm struck by what she originally said. So, "I still hold that AT&amp;T has submitted an application that depends upon the variance request that the ancillary equipment he cited above ground be approved. Therefore, they did not provide sufficient evidence, so they've met the sound requirement which required the hearings official to craft a process to prove compliance at final PUD approval." AT&amp;T should have met that requirement at the original application. Therefore, I move or reverse our findings to affirm Nor Green Property's second, third, and eleventh, and 13th assignments of error, that the final PUD cannot be used to provide the opportunity for the applicant to meet the noise standard and require the applicant to submit a new application.
So, let's treat that as a motion to amend the main motion, if that's okay with you?
Correct.
So, everyone's clear. So, what we would need is a second?
Correct.
On Commissioner Belcher's motion to amend the motion on the table.
I'll second it.
So, we should have discussion on the motion to amend, and then vote on whether or not to amend it, and then if it doesn't pass, we'll get back to the main motion.
Commissioner Belcher.
One more thing. We've been talking about criteria to advise the applicant on how they might submit a new application. If we approve this, and they go through that route, they're not submitting a new application. We have a record, both video and written, of the items we discuss, and that's available to the applicant. So, that's still available should we decide not to approve this application. So, I think we've met that criterion, and therefore, we should deny it.
Commissioner Leidig. If I understand the essence of your point, John, it's tying the CUP approval to the PUD final approval in the future, and if that's the issue, I guess, step back a meeting or two, you know, to the extent that the city planning and approval process can be simplified or streamlined by piggybacking some of these approvals, I think it's in the city's best interest to try to accomplish that where it can, to try to do this on like a critical path or something, where you have that one approval, and then the next approval, if they can be done concurrently, I support that kind of effort. And I think that's what we're sitting up here. I appreciate Emily's concern that there could be a risk, but to the extent that it can be accomplished legally, I support any kind of effort where we can, we can get applicants through a process that isn't long and drawn out unnecessarily, so if it can be piggybacked like that. So, if that's your concern, I'm okay with what we've done here, going out on a limb maybe, but anyway, that's, I appreciate your concern on that. And I, too, would agree with you. Sorry that we didn't get into the conversation about what obviates means in that particular criteria, because if this does get approved, and the applicant decides not going to do this, going to reapply, there are a lot of unanswered questions in terms of what the expectations might be. I think we've gone down the road a considerable ways, so that if this comes back again before, some expectation has been built. But I would have liked to have gotten into that whole criteria about what obviates means in terms of getting the variance for the undergrounding of the ancillary equipment. That'll be interesting. Commissioner Randle.
And I guess, John, my question would be, is your, am I understanding that your concern is with the new noise standard, or the new, not the new noise standard, but with the new noise information that would come as a result of undergrounding, because that only happens at the final PUD, because we've approved the others, that takes away an element of public comment on that? Is that, am I understanding that right? Is that a staff, is that a type two at that point, the final PUD?
Mm-hmm.
So, that's Planning Director.
It is this notice and an opportunity to submit written comment.
But not a public hearing.
Not a public hearing at that point, but unlike what you deal with, if there is an appeal, the appeal is open to all new evidence and argument. There's a hearing, and it's a full-blown hearing.
I do have a concern that we're going from a type three down to a type two, yes. And the other piece that I didn't have in this motion, but should it pass, I would also move that we not, that we not use the criterion that we've set for the screening issue as well, because my feeling is we're sort of crafting new code, as it were, and the appellants don't have any opportunity to respond to it. They either comply, or they don't. So, to me, that's a concern as well.
Just maybe staff could clarify that. Was not the type of screening we're talking about part of the original conditioning that you were suggesting to the hearings official?
Yes, it's a combination of what the staff recommended initially, and then the hearings official added to.
Yeah, okay. So, it's nothing new we're imposing.
I already agree with that.
Not in theme. Obviously, we tried to tie it together better.
Yep.
But it passes that sort of legal test, I think.
Okay.
Although we did set standards as to who got to get the trees, and the minimum of two, all of those versus, none of that's been available for comment. They can either take it or leave it, and that concerns me as well. But I don't want to spend too much time on this, because I think I know where it's going.
Other comments or questions relating to the motion to amend? Let's put it to those in favor of the motion to amend? Those opposed? Looks like it's two, four, four opposed. I think the motion to amend then fails.
So, your main motion is back on the table?
Main motion is on the table for discussion.
Mm-hmm.
Sorry, I need reinforcement on Robert's rules.
You're doing well.
Commissioner Leidig. And this is just to add the modifications?
Yes.
Yes.
Not the whole thing?
Right, yeah. Any other questions or discussions on the motion to incorporate the edits as summarized by Emily?
So, we'll have another vote to approve, right?
Another vote to approve the edits. Those in favor of the edits as summarized? Motion carries, those opposed? Looks like it's five, one. So, is our next order of business to consider a motion to approve? Commissioner Leidig. I move that the Planning Commission modifies and affirms the decision of the hearings official to conditionally approve the tentative PUD and CUP requests for AT&amp;T Mobility, Oakway Golf Course, that's land use sections PDT 10-2, and CU 11-1. Those modifications would be as we just approved.
Second.
Commissioner Randle seconds the motion. Discussion and questions relating to this motion? Hearing, no questions or discussions. I'll go ahead and proceed to a vote. Those in favor of the motion, send them by. Those opposed carries four, two. I guess I'd like to just add a comment here at the end.
Recognizing the effort of staff and the patience and diligence of staff in keeping us on track for this effort, I know there's been a lot of questions in the public about whether or not we've been proceeding in an expeditious manner, and I feel that we really have. I also want to commend the commissioners for, for their hard work on making sure we all had a clear understanding of what was involved here, although we didn't end up in the end agreeing. I think that the work done here added a lot of clarity. And I wanted to thank everybody. Commissioner Belcher.
I'd like to reaffirm that, too. I appreciate your willingness to hear my arguments and for staff to work through the issues. We appreciate the perspective.
With that, we close the deliberation on AT&amp;T Mobility and ask if there are any other items from staff.
I'll, I don't have the critical data, but I'll just let you know that the application period closed for the Planning Commission, for the two vacant positions. I don't have the exact number. I know we had numerous requests, so I think we have a definite pool to draw from, so that's the good news, is we don't have to re-advertise. I don't have all the names and numbers of how many actually applied, but I do know that we had a fair number. So we'll be moving through that process, or the council will be.
Items from commissioners? There being no apparent items from commissioners, and that's the only item from staff, we'll adjourn the meeting.